All in by calling 415-655-0001. Webinar access code 2631-1718341 and password 1234. And that will work for the hearing that is scheduled for later in the meeting as well. The first thing on the agenda then would be approval of the minutes from the previous meeting.
Commissioner Sturso moved.
Commissioner Canely seconds.
Moved in second to approve the minutes from the previous meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. The next thing on the agenda is the open forum. The open forum is an opportunity for residents and community members of Richfield to address the planning commission generally on items that are not on the agenda. There is a hearing scheduled for later in the meeting, so that would be a time to speak as well. But if you have anything you'd like to address the commission about not on the agenda, we would invite you to come forward. Have we received any comments or calls?
Chair, no we have not.
All right, then we'll move on with the regular scheduled meeting. We've been, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Commissioner Canely, so moved.
Kolkowski seconded.
All right, all in favor of approving the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. The first thing on the agenda then is a public hearing to consider a request for a conditional use permit and amended planned unit development and final development plan for retail use at 14066th Street West in order to retenant the building with a new grocer. Could we have the staff report, please?
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. A new grocery store, Loma Bonita, would like to occupy the former Rainbow Foods building, but because the building has been vacant for more than a year, the conditional use permit has expired and nonconformities must be brought up to current code to the extent possible. Consequently, the property owner, Bricksmore, is before us this evening requesting a new conditional use permit and an amended planned unit development and final development plan. The proposed changes repair and enhance the look of the grocery store building, improve problematic onsite circulation patterns, decrease the parking, and increase the landscaping. Other improvements include adding EV charging stations, adding bike racks, adding a pedestrian path from the transit stop on 66 to the building, reconstructing the dumpster enclosure, and providing rooftop mechanical screening. Staff finds that, subject to the stipulations recommended in the ARC report attached to your staff report, the proposal meets the intent of both the comprehensive plan and the C2 zoning district, and therefore recommends approval of the proposal. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Planner Cosby? Is the applicant, does the applicant have a representative here? You'd like to approach the podium and sign in and then state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Lauren Robinson with Bricksmore Property Group. My address is 8700 West Bryn Mawr Avenue, Suite 1000 South, Chicago, Illinois 60631. So again, I am, my name is Lauren Robinson. I am a project director with Bricksmore Property Group who owns Richfield Hub. I'm excited to be here seeking this approval. As Sam mentioned, we have a signed lease with Super Mercado Loma Bonita, who will be backfilling the former Rainbow Foods. And just for background, Loma Bonita is an established, family-owned Hispanic grocer. They have four existing locations in the Twin Cities and Savage, St. Paul, Crystal, and Hilltop. And the family's been targeting Richfield for a while as the ideal place for a full-scale grocery store unlike anything else they've done. And so I wanted to highlight a few items in our application. First off, the schedule has changed from what was submitted. We were originally targeting the store opening at the end of the year, but due to this process and the site improvements which will require Popeyes approval, it's difficult for us to provide a specific date right now. We are anticipating opening six months after receiving approval from Popeyes because it's a three to six month construction timeline. Secondly, the budget has also increased. Through our work with staff regarding, in regarding ways that the property does not comply with code, we've committed to several new items which were not in our original scope. Our application lists a $3.7 million spend, but we are now projecting spending closer to $4.2 million. And I just want to emphasize that our scope reflects an entirely new experience for customers coming to the center. We'll be installing new islands at the entry off of 66, which will create a more rational drive aisle pattern to access the grocery, the grocery store and the main center. Those islands will feature landscaping, which is something we all know is lacking here. For pedestrians, there will be a landscaped pedestrian path from the bus stop on 66th leading to the grocery store's entry, and there will be bike racks located on the sidewalks for customers to use. The facade will also be significantly upgraded to include painting of the existing metal canopy, a new canopy hung with metal cables from a new Eiffel's facade, and a tower element, and two tower elements to signify the store entries. Third, the third thing I wanted to highlight was the first item on the staff report, which is the requirement for one L2 or L3 charger and for 13 EV-ready spaces. We are going to use our best efforts to realize this requirement, but I did want to let the commission know that we support and implement EV charger, charging stations, but we as a company do not provide the EV charging infrastructure. We contract with the EV charging network provider. And so it's really up to those third-party providers to make a determination as to whether an installation is viable or not. We've already presented this site to five of the companies who we've partnered with in the past, and we've had encouraging conversations with one group. But again, I just wanted to emphasize that our company does not install the EV charging infrastructure. And the last thing on my list that I wanted to bring up is regarding number 10 and number 11 in the staff report, and that relates to the building elevations. And this is the one item that we do have an objection to. The report is requesting awnings to run the entire length of the building on the northwest and the, I'm sorry, on the, I'm just calling it north, north and south side, the 66th side and then the side that faces the main center. As you see on the screen, we've included in our packet the proposed new elevations. And so on the south side, we were proposing to demo a portion of the existing canopy and create and install a new canopy from metal hung cables. The existing canopy that will remain would be painted, and we just think that that new canopy matches the more modern aesthetic. It'll be complemented by a mural at the corner of the building. And the north side will get a similar treatment. The existing metal canopy will stay in place, and it'll get this new canopy hung by metal cables. In meeting with staff, we've learned that the code requires relief from large blank walls. And so on the northeast side, we've proposed that we can break up the expanse of that wall by implementing, I'm sorry, one second, implementing some faux architectural elements like columns. And also, the staff has also requested, like I said, that the canopies extend the entire length of the building on both sides. But for us, that's cost prohibitive. The costs in this deal have continued to increase. As I've mentioned, we've met with staff and we've increased our scope. And for us to extend the canopies, the full length of the building on both sides, it's something that we just can't do from a cost perspective. And so we are proposing that if the city really desires the protection from the element and canopies on both sides, that we leave the existing canopy in place. And we can work in the new tower elements within the existing canopy, but we cannot extend, we cannot tear off the existing canopy, put back in new canopies, and extend the full length of the building, and add architectural elements. Like I said, it's just cost prohibitive. And those, again, those are the items that I wanted to bring up. We're super excited about this, this grocer, and we're hoping you are too. So that ends my comments.
Are there any questions for the applicant from the commission?
I have a question. Can you just tell me the terms of the lease, like how long this lease is for?
Yeah. So it is a 10-year lease with several options. I don't know the full, the amount of option period, but the base term is 10 years.
Thank you.
Could you explain a little bit more about the conditions that your negotiations with owners of Popeyes for? I see that there would be a pedestrian path that would cross Popeyes property, but you are still in negotiations with them for, like what, if that were not to take place, what would be the contingent situation?
Yeah, so this, the plan does hinge its contention on Popeyes approval because several of the landscaped islands are on their property. We also have an easement agreement whereby the common area cannot be altered without their approval. We are in conversations with Popeyes. We've met with them and introduced this concept. We do not have approval from them at this time. That's something we're going to be working on. When we worked with staff on this, they weren't really wanting to entertain a, like a separate plan discussion at this time. But if Popeyes is not going to provide approval, we will have to totally rethink the improvements we're proposing because we can't, we can't do what we're proposing because the entry cannot be altered without their permission.
Thank you so much. If you don't mind, we might ask you a couple more questions if we hear some things from the public, if that's all right with you.
That's fine.
All right. Any discussion before we, if there's any members of the public who would like to speak on this matter, please approach the podium. Did we receive any comments beforehand or?
Chair and Commissioners, not really. We did receive about five or six phone calls, but all of them were simply asking who the new tenant was going to be, and I told them, and nobody had any real concerns to express.
Yes, if you'd like to speak, please, please approach the podium. If you'd just sign in and state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Michael Gormley, 6926 Third Avenue South here in Richfield, 55423. I just, it's, I don't know if this is the, it's related, but perhaps maybe a separate question. And that is about the experience of the tenant in terms of running a 50,000 square foot grocery since it's their largest project thus far, and then the internals. We're talking about the externals now, which I understand there are a lot of issues related to that. But internally, are there certain requirements that they will have for upgrading the interior of the, since it's been unoccupied for, you know, at least a year, if not longer? Because I don't recall that there's been an actual tenant in there since I've been here, and I moved here four years ago. It would be great to know a little bit more about that, if the plans from the actual tenant, or if that's something that would have to be addressed by the tenant themselves.
I can ask Planner Cosby, from my understanding, the developer or tenant would need to bring the interior up to current code, correct?
Chair and Commissioners, there are very extensive interior remodeling plans. In fact, most of the 4.2 million that the representative was referring to is internal. The, as far as the applicant's, or the new, new grocer's experience with running this size of a store, I, you know, the representative touched on that earlier, but could certainly be called up to respeak to that a little bit more, if that's your desire.
Is there anyone else who'd like to address the commission about this matter? I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Commissioner Serma, so moved.
Commissioner Canely seconds.
All right. Moved and seconded to close the public hearing. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Discussion for the commission.
I have a question. Planner Cosby, given the comments about the EV charger, what would happen if they were unable to provide the charging station? Or is, like, yeah, if you could comment on that?
Sure. Chair and Commissioner Sturso, we would want to see what efforts they have put forward, who they've talked with, they said that they've had conversations. What would, I guess, probably happen would be that they might put up a letter of credit for incomplete items and continue to work on it after the store has opened. And then after a while, if they still can't get anybody to, you know, provide these services, then they could come back and ask for a variance from the code showing the hardship that they have gone through at, by then, to kind of prove that it's a necessary variance.
Any other discussion or questions?
And in regards to the elevations and the metal awning, was it aesthetic concerns that staff, or, oh, why did staff make the recommendation that it did?
Yeah. Chair and Commissioners, the, it was both aesthetic and practical. There is a sidewalk along that north, northeast elevation that we believe people will be using, so we thought it would help to provide shelter from the elements. But really, for the aesthetic part is primarily the vertical breakup of that long expanse of blank wall that you can see from 65th Street quite well because of the curvature of the roadway. So really, that kind, that is more, I think, visible and will be more prominent of a improvement than necessarily the, the pedestrian awning.
Thank you.
Planner Cosby, with the, the counterproposal from the developer to reuse the existing awning and alter the architectural elements to reuse that, would that meet city staff's concerns?
I haven't seen, like, I haven't been given time to consider that. I think that last we spoke, we were talking about doing the, the new awning, but maybe less of it, maybe not the entire length of, of the wall. We could certainly take a look at the language of number, I believe it was 11, and see if we could soften it some if, if that was in the planning commission's interest.
I think there's maybe something to be said, too, about reusing architectural elements in terms of reducing construction waste, or, I mean, I may, that might not be a bad thing either, if that's, if there's a way to reuse those elements in a way that's aesthetically pleasing and meets the other concerns, that, that might actually be a positive. Any other questions or comments?
Commissioner Kolkowski. No questions. I come from a town where we have plenty of Hispanic grocery stores, so I'm really excited about the idea of putting a new option for grocery shopping on 66. I think everyone's excited to have that building occupied. So, yeah, from a higher level perspective, I think it'll bring a lot of business into Richfield, and I'm excited to help Bricksmore and the tenant get moving.
Chair. Just generally, we've all been eager to see redevelopment at the hub, and there's, there's a long list of improvements included with this, along with what our co-commissioner has already stated. I think this is really great development. Planner Cosby?
Thank you, Chair. Sorry to interrupt. I have two comments. The first is that with the rain outside, I know that the microphones are extremely sensitive, so if you could make sure to project into them as much as possible, because I'm sure the rain is countering our speak. And then the second thing is that it says, the condition number 11 does not say new awning or old awning, it just says awning, and it says along the entire north side of the building. So it could be revised to remove the word entire or to modify that adjective as a suggestion.
Commissioner Sturso, I guess, I too share the enthusiasm for this proposal. I do think that that site, as most residents agree, I think in Richfield is in need of improvement. And so I do think that I am supportive of staff's initial recommendation for, I mean, we put a lot of time and thought and energy into what we want to see this space to be. And I think that this, staff recommendation reflects the time and the work and the energy and thought that we've put into what we want that space to be. So I would be reluctant to not require that standard for that site personally.
To cover, you say you would support leaving the language as it is now?
Correct.
Okay. We would need a motion to move the recommendation, unless other people have.
Commissioner Sturso is not at the right spot. I would recommend approval of the proposed conditional use permit, planned unit development, and final development plan as proposed by staff in the packet.
So you're moving, that we move that recommendation forward? Okay. Is there a second?
Seconded by Commissioner Serma.
All right. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? All right. The next item on the agenda is the capital improvement budget. Could we have the staff report, please?
Yeah, okay. Can't we just get rid of the toolbar on the left side? Yeah. Thank you. Okay, how do I move it forward if I need to? Would you do that? Okay, thank you so much. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Komud Verma. I'm the Finance Director. Today, I'm here to present the capital improvement budget for 2025 and capital improvement plan for 2026 to 2029. 2025 capital improvement budget is $31.9 million, and nearly 64% of that is related to recreation and open space. About $4.2 million is budgeted for Veterans Park Complex, and $16 million for the Woodlake Nature Center project to be built in 2025 and 26. Woodlake project will be funded from a variety of funding sources that include federal and state grants and local sales tax if approved by voters. Right-of-way projects include projects like pavement management programs, improvements to the 70th Street, noise barrier on the west side of Highway 62, Lindell Avenue reconstruction, et cetera. Other major projects include traffic signal replacements, Nicollet Avenue reconstruction, and Penn Avenue reconstruction. Public facilities budget of $2.6 million includes sanitary sewer lining, rehab of stormwater systems, new lift station at ICE Arena, and sanitary sewer hotspot improvements. Lastly, $3.1 million is budgeted for buildings fleet and technology that way, that would, that would provide funding for public works storage facility, purchase of fleet, and public works facility garage repairs. Here is a summary of the projects by funding sources. City projects are funded from a variety of different sources. Revenue from user fee and franchise fee provides for 9% and 6% respectively to fund all the capital projects. City staff diligently strives to identify and secure funding from a variety of federal, state, and county programs. Here is the capital improvement plan of $75 million for 26 to 2029. Variety of projects will be undertaken during next four years. Majority of the funds will be spent on the right-of-way projects. And this is how the city is going to be funding $75 million of the budgeted projects. Addressing our capital needs continue to present ongoing challenges. Following couple of slides. No. Yeah, it's, it's slightly off, but I can manage. Following couple of slides provide additional details on the major capital projects undertaken by Public Works Department and Recreation Department. This includes 494 project, and the construction is going to run between spring of '23 to fall of '26. Nicollet Avenue reconstruction project is going to cost $21 million, and city would cover for $10 million construction to begin in '26. Here's list of other public works projects that will be undertaken over next couple of years that include emergency water main interconnect, 69th Street reconstruction, and 76th Street This is the Woodlake Nature Center project. The total project cost is $25 million, and as I mentioned earlier, it will be covered from the federal grant, state grant, and bond financing. The breakdown for the $25 million for the Woodlake Nature Center includes $12 million grant from State of Minnesota, $3 million in federal grant, and $10 million in debt financing. Here's additional list of the projects that will be covered by, that will be completed over next couple of years. Veterans Parks Complex project totaling $9 million cover, pool liner replacement, arena building improvements, new roof on the rink, resurface trails, pavilion improvements, band shell irrigation, accessible wildlife viewing platform, cohesive park signage, and invasive, invasive species management. Yep, this is just list of more projects. Pool liner is going to cost $3.6 million. And the Donaldson Park Building and Playground is going to cost $1.4 million in building and $175,000 in playground, sorry, $130,000. That is what I had for today. Your feedback is welcome, and I'm happy to follow up on any question you may have. Thank you.
Go ahead, Ms. Sturso.
The prices that were included in the park improvements, does that presume that the, the improvements that you noted, the park improvements that you noted to Veterans Park and to Woodlake and the community center, I believe, were those dollar amounts presuming that the ballot question is approved and, questions are approved in November? Or is that property tax dollars that you're talking about?
That is, that is on the. That is, that is on the assumption that the local sales tax will be approved by the voters.
Thank you. Thank you for that clarification.
Question. Commissioner Serma here. I, I see some amounts in here, one in particular, $200,000 for Penn Avenue reconstruction. I read elsewhere in the report that that project is still likely five to six years away from actually taking place. Just asking for a clarification of what the $200,000 is for. I assume preliminary planning and whatnot, but I, I like to ask questions here that can clarify this for us and for the greater public at large, when we see $200,000 for a project that is still a number of years away from likely happening. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, for the question. I do not have the project sheet ready with me here, but I'm happy to follow up with the project manager and get back to you with details. Thank you.
I actually wanted to ask because I remember last year, there was discussion about the, the pool liner, that that was specifically discussed, and, but was that deferred from last year's capital plan and moved forward, or, because I remember a specific discussion that was had about the pool liner last year.
Commissioner, again, I do not have the project sheet with me. I would, I'm recording your question, and I will get back to you with details. Thank you.
Planner Cosby, our role is to, it would be to recommend that, or to state that we believe that this plan is in line with the comprehensive plan, right?
Chair, yes, that is correct.
Okay. We would need a motion.
Yeah, Commissioner Stersa, I'm making the motion to recommend approval of the 2026-2029 capital improvement program and adopt a resolution finding that the 2025 capital improvement budget and the 2026-2029 capital improvement program are consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Seconded by Commissioner Serma.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
All right. The next thing on the agenda is liaison reports, community service advisory.
Commissioner Kolkowski, no report today.
All right. City council, I also do not have a report today. HRA?
At the last HRA meeting, the HRA approved the 2025 budget and tax levy, and they, uh, Community Development Director Pullman gave a great overview of the budget. So if anyone's curious about some of the HRA work, it's a 20-minute presentation that I'd recommend listening to.
All right. School board?
Yes, Chair. The school board met August 5th and August 19th in preparation for this coming, coming school year. They announced bid awards for bread products, disposable products, and milk products. They reviewed all sorts of policies for the upcoming year regarding fundraising activities, use of school facilities and grounds, the standard beginning of the school year kinds of things. They also presented a Spartan Foundation Scholarship check. So beyond that, nothing else to report.
All right. Transportation commission?
Yes, the Transportation Commission discussed and received a presentation from Public Works about safe routes to school implementation along 73rd Street, I believe, yeah, 73rd Street between Cedar and Bloomington Avenues near Centennial Elementary. There's been a pilot project going on recently to improve pedestrian safety around that school, and they've been outlining the project ideas for more, a more permanent solution and in the preliminary stages of going forward with, with outreach on that.
All right. And our Chamber of Commerce and Sustainability are absent. The city planners report?
Thank you, Chair and Commissioner. The only item is that Stall One Auto, that conditional use permit and variance from last month, was approved by the city council on August 14th.
All right.
Can I ask one question?
Yeah, of course.
Sorry for not catching, but did the city council review the parking changes for MR2 and MR3? And if so, could you, changing the minimums to 1.25?
Yes. Chair and Commissioner Stersa, the, the parking ordinance was approved by the city council, and they did drop the MR2 and MR3 requirements to 1.25 across the board. So they are in line with all others. All zoning districts are now the same. So, yeah. Thanks for asking.
Thank you for that update.
All right. Yeah, our, then, our next regular meeting would be next month, on the September 23rd, and then we have the joint work session with the city council on the 24th.
Chair, if you'll entertain a motion to adjourn, I'd like to make one.
All right. And a second?
Seconded, Commissioner Serma.
All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We stand adjourned.